Going to call the Monday, December seventeenth, City Council moved an order and asked the clerk to call.
Here.
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 Here. After the clerk, would please provide the invitation and Mr. Posey, the pledge.
Let's pray. Lord, we lift our hearts to you in thanksgiving for the gift of your love. May we be shining examples of your love to others. We place in your care tonight all those who are struggling physically, mentally, or spiritually, that they may find strength in your healing power. Hear the prayers in the hearts of all gathered here tonight, and bestow your wisdom and your guidance on this mayor and council in their daily service to this city. In your name we pray, amen.
New hand pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic whose stand is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair is open to the motion on the minutes. Mr. President, I'll move for approval of this, I'll read.
Third.
The motion is second, and the comments and questions from the council. The press, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposing aye, the ayes have it. In the reports section, first we have Brandon Bruce, Executive Artistic Director with Birmingham Children's Theater. None, tell us something good.
Hello, please. Hi. Hi, everybody, it's Brandon Bruce, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak with you today. One of the things I wanted to, the main reason I'm here today is I wanted to thank Hoover, the City Council, specifically for your support for Birmingham Children's Theater through the years. I'm fairly new, I've been at Birmingham Children's Theater for the past two and a half years. I have a long theatrical history that was mostly in Chicago, and then I went to Lamsburg, and then I came here. And the reason why I now work for Birmingham Children's Theater is because I'm very, very passionate about the work that we do. We are the second oldest professional theater for young audiences in the nation, right here in Birmingham area. It's a major deal, very, very excited about that. And I'm just really, really thrilled to work here, and I should point out, I have a common misconception, what you may not know about Birmingham Children's Theater is that we are professionals. It's professional actors, professional designers, professional, not children performing. Not that there's anything wrong with that, that's a lovely thing. But we are professional actors, professional designers, professional everything. I come in from all over the country, and I employ a lot of artists from across the state and across the nation. And then, yeah, that's mostly all I had to say. I really would love to be very involved in whatever way that we can to get Birmingham Children's Theater more involved with the Hoover community, more inside the Hoover community, whether that means Hoover students coming to see our shows, which I'm very excited about that, please do tell all of your teachers, if there are any teachers in the room, please come and see our shows. If you haven't been here in a while, there's a lot of changes going on. It's a major renaissance that's going on at Birmingham Children's Theater. But if the flip of that is that there's any ever, going to ever be any opportunities for Birmingham Children's Theater to actually be here, physically here in Hoover, I'm very much interested in the presence of that possibility. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here today, and have a good day.
You may also want to go talk to the Board of Education.
Yes.
To control a lot of the funding for these children to be able to spend some time.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, I met with the, all of the district superintendents, and I've also gone to the ATTC to meet with all of them. So, if there's ever an opportunity for me to go and speak with the Board of Education, with anyone, I'm definitely interested.
Should they be glad to hear from you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Dustin Chandler, here to speak on Carly's flip outs. Okay, we'll come back to him. Mr. Green, would you have an appointment to plan?
Yes, I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following appointments to the board reselling adjustments. We're going to move Mr. David Lacamp from his current supernumerary position to a regular voting member to fill the unexpired term of Paul Gamble, whose term expires June seventh, 2020, and appoint Mr. TJ Dullin to replace Mr. Lacamp as supernumerary, term to expire May thirty-one, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye, the ayes have it. Mayor, we have some employee recognition. Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to call him, Colin, come up, Colin. Colin. Colin is, gosh, what can I say about this guy? I probably get more compliments, more phone calls on him than anyone in the city, and it's for a good reason. Colin is in our engineering department, served twenty years now. He was hired as a horticulturist back in nineteen ninety-eight, and then we created a position for a urban forester in two thousand and five, and he just does an incredible job in our city. Probably something that a lot of cities don't offer, someone, an individual like him that understands trees. He's a true tree hugger, he loves trees, he loves them, knows all about them, knows how to nurture them, and grow them, and hug them, and our citizens appreciate, and we appreciate, everything that you do. You know, he does great programs at our schools each year, working with the kids there, just getting them interested in horticulture and trees in general. Just to sit and listen to him talk about trees, and he can tell you everything about them, and it's just really, he's a fascinating individual, a hard worker, and really somebody we're grateful to have in our city, and hope you'll give us twenty more years. Thank you very much. Colin, if you would, I've got to make no easy trees, Mr. Green, teach me how to talk to them. And next, I'd like to invite Preston Williams.
So, I would ask Mr. City Attorney, we have a proclamation on human trafficking, and I would love for you to agree that.
Whereas, human trafficking is a very real problem facing the world today. Although it can take many forms, including debt bondage, forced marriage, slavery, and commercial sexual exploitation, in every case, it goes against the core principles of individual freedom and civil rights that our state and nation stand for. The City of Hoover, Alabama, is committed to ensuring that our community remains on the front lines in combating this horrible crime. Whereas, due to its secretive and illegal nature, it is difficult to accurately quantify the extent of human trafficking. However, the U.S. Department of State estimates that anywhere from six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand people are trafficked across international borders each year. Most victims of human trafficking are women or children who have been marginalized and isolated from society. The difficulty in grasping the full scope of this problem can be further compounded because people often turn blind eye to it. And whereas, the first step in eliminating human trafficking is to educate others, we must work to ensure that all our residents are aware of this problem and how to spot it. We must work together as a community so that human traffickers are punished, protected, and assisted their victims through the vigilance and perseverance of our citizens. Effective enforcement of justice will someday be our reality. And whereas, we ask all residents of this community to join in us, join us in raising the visibility of this crime, which happens for all too often in this world. Together, we can become more informed about this pressing issue and work to combat its injustices. Now, therefore, I, Frank DeBracato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, do hereby proclaim January two thousand and nineteen as Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
All right, next we have our consent agenda, because I have a motion that I'd like to have on one of these items. I'm going to pass the gavel to President Proten, Mr. Green.
Do I have a motion, Mr. Smith, was it item C, would you want to?
I would like to have item E pulled out and taken, be ready for a agenda.
Have a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda, leaving item B in regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Smith, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith, if you don't have anything else, I will go ahead and leave.
Mr. Carly, if you would, do what you need to do with the consent agenda policy. Please understand that these items were gone over in depth this past Thursday on the work session, and should be able to be viewed on YouTube at any given time. And we're going to be dealing with these in like, like order on the agenda's going forward.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Smith, on per item E, I assume you want to take that next on the regular agenda.
It will come in sometime. I know previous agendas it was towards the end, but we can make it next.
Take that as item seven.
Yes, sir.
So, resolution number fifty-nine sixteen eighteen, authorizes Mayor Frank DeBracato to execute an interlocal agreement with the City of Pelham for the provision of services to maintain and repair vehicles owned by Pelham.
No, we're talking about the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a vote to approve the following items on the consent agenda. Item A is to reschedule the January twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen City Council meeting to June eighteen, three seventy-second, due to Department of Engineering holiday. Resolution number fifty-nine, code nine eighteen, to amend the budget for this year, ending September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution number fifty-nine, twelve eighteen, authorize the installation of certain fire hydrants. And resolution number fifty-nine, fifteen eighteen, authorize the mayor's estimate to execute the lock me and order form for mobile software.
All right, unless anyone has any reason to have any of those four removed from the consent agenda, then we will vote them all together at this time.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval of all items.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye, the ayes have it. Next, I'm going to turn the gavel over again to Mr. Green, and we're going to deal with item E, resolution fifty-nine sixteen eighteen.
Resolution number fifty-nine sixteen eighteen, Mr. Carly.
Yes, sir, this resolution authorizes Mayor DeBracato to execute an interlocal agreement with the City of Pelham for the provision of services to maintain and repair vehicles owned by the City of Pelham.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval of resolution fifty-nine sixteen eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council regarding this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a very good agreement, a lot of work is going into it. It wasted five percent of all the fees added together on an annualized basis. The mayor has worked hard to put together an agreement that is going to help Hoover, but it's really going to help Pelham. Like I said, I have nothing against them, but they're probably going to save quarter million, three hundred thousand dollars a year, and we're only going to get fourteen thousand dollars out of it, other than reimbursement. Personally, I just have issues about them. The insurances, it really doesn't state. I know we've been told that Pelham will reimburse Hoover for required insurances to the contract, but there's nothing in here that states that, I don't believe, that states that Pelham will be reimbursing. I don't see it in the rates and bills. So, there's nothing that holds Pelham to the agreement. I understand they're voting tonight, just as we're voting tonight ourselves on this same agreement. I know that the city administrator's been aware of a number of my concerns for a while now. Fortunately, I guess we got caught up in other issues of the day, and haven't communicated everything through. One is the garage keepers and garage life ability, which are policy. It was our, yeah, that's a two feet of German, so we're voting on something we don't even know what the cause is, nor what the coverage is. And I just, I don't like voting on things that I don't know everything that I'm voting for. That's why I always get the thick version of the budgets every year. Mr. President, I assume that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other council member have anything? Anyone from the audience like to comment on this resolution? Mr. Rice, Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to clear up the issue on page three because of the reputation that our fleet director has and the type of service that he provides and what proceeds. So, we really think that this is an agreement that's about more than the dollars and cents. We don't think by any means we'd lose anything. And they have agreed in spirit and in concept to come back and revisit this at our request. So, if we see that our associated costs are, were not predictable, or are greater than what we thought, they've agreed to come right back to the table at the first opportunity of renegotiating. I don't think Pelham has any inclination whatsoever to try to take advantage of the city in this. I think all we have to do is point out to them that, hey, we see some costs now that none of us forecasted, and I think they'll be back at the table to renegotiate. With that, I just answer any questions that might happen.
President, if I could ask one question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, obviously, the biggest concern for me is understanding, or can we go ahead and set up like quarterly reports for the first year, a couple of years, to understand how it's working, how to be, make sure we put the systems in place immediately to track what our costs are and everything? Because I hate to get into eight months or a year into it and say, well, we think this is what it is, or have to dissect things. I think that'd be an important thing, the six-month termination clause for any reason. So, if something, how it goes wrong, we can terminate. But I think the main thing is being able to report and analyze exactly what's happened, so the council can make sure everything's going well.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shaw, we've committed, and Pelham has committed a quarterly billing cycle, so we could easily just translate that into a report to the council.
Yeah, I think we have quarterly reports saying, hey, here's the status of the program, since it is kind of new, and we've put on a new thing to do, I think, I think that would go a long way. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Rice, one other thing, you brought it Thursday about revisiting the status of the shop form.
Yes, sir.
And relying on the Department head now, he's responsible not just for Hoover's four or five hundred vehicles, and some other, Pelham's hundred and seventy-five vehicles.
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying, legislative agenda.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, yeah, and I believe he does have an appeal pending, separate from this. And certainly, this is material to that, and we'll certainly take that into consideration.
Okay, no further questions, thank you, Mr. Rice. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on this one?
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyden?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Hi.
Mr. Spessky, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm going to get that.
Madam Clerk, I was discussing something with Mr. Smith. How'd the vote turn out?
Did you read that?
I played a motion, I want you to say it. Okay, thank you, that I returned the gavel to.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, resolution fifty-nine ten eighteen, Mr. Carly.
Item number fifty-nine ten eighteen, this is a motion to continue to the January seventh, two thousand and nineteen meeting, with consideration of the number of eighteen that you were on duty for Hoover's administration.
This is a motion to continue.
Mr. President, I'll move to continue, President fifty-nine ten eighteen.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye, the ayes have it. Next, a public hearing on abatement of public nuisance due to weeds and/or grass. How are you, sir? Calm down, we haven't seen you in a while. Yes, sir, this is the.
Robert Mack in Building Solutions. This is our second hearing on this property at twenty-two seventy-two Vanessa Drive. This is the, where you all vote to abate the property, and the pictures were taken this afternoon, and so it's. Got any other questions?
Is this residence inhabited?
The owner, I believe, does come there, but there's some legal issues, so I'm not sure if he lives there all the time or not, so.
It's not foreclosed, is it?
No, sir, I don't, I believe there's other issues.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mack, how, how long ago was the front yard cut? It looks like it's been.
The front yard's, the front yard's in good shape, it's just the fence area and the back is overgrown, and has been for a while. This whole weather's just about taken care of, but we still need to finish it out if it's really safe.
Any other questions from the council? And from the audience? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the resolutions? Well, okay, well, first, we need to end the public hearing. And now, we will ask for a motion, resolution fifty-nine oh eight eighteen.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval of resolution fifty-nine.
No, wait, please.
Second.
A motion in the second, Mr. Carly.
This resolution declares the following property as a public nuisance due to weeds and/or grass there on twenty-two seventy-two Vanessa Drive, Hoover, Alabama, and orders to abate the thereof as provided under Alabama law.
Any questions from the council? Anyone represent the property? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye, the ayes have it. Make a notation that Mr. Murphy has had to leave for, he's not feeling his best tonight, but he'll be back. Next, resolution fifty-nine seventeen eighteen. Mr. Carly.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank DeBracato to execute a tax abating agreement for Project East West providing tax incentives allowed under Alabama law.
I move for approval of resolution fifty-nine seventeen.
Second.
Motion in the second, Mr. Green. Would you like to come up and play on what we're talking about?
Absolutely. I'm just going to provide everyone with a copy of the nonredacted version of the resolution. So, the resolution that's in front of you and the development agreement is just as if you, as you've seen before, just with the code name removed from it, and now the company's name placed on it. No changes to any documents that you've seen, with the exception of one small date change on the actual abatement application. But that's it. Like, happy to talk a little bit about the project, and also, we have a representative from the company here to be able to address handful tonight if this is.
Perhaps you can speak to what the council's going to be voting, should it pass?
Absolutely.
And what would benefit business as well as the city, and the amount that the city's giving out.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, as we've mentioned before, this project, the company, of course, is Biohorizons Implantation Systems Incorporated. Their basement, River Chase Corporate Park. They currently employ a hundred and eighty-five people, they're a medical device company here in Hoover, Alabama, Shelby County portion of Hoover. They are planning for an expansion, that's sixty new jobs. They would have an average annual salary of some sixty thousand, fifty thousand dollars a year. They would have about two billion dollars in capital investment that would be added along with that expansion. And what they're seeking are abatements for construction-related costs, equipping the facility, as well as abatements of personal properties, the new machinery, and other equipment that will be in the facility. And as we've looked at in the past, that would equal, on behalf, on behalf of the City of Hoover, about fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars in sales and use tax abatements, and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars over ten years, personal property tax abatement. According to the estimates that we've seen based on our impact analysis, we would be receiving, receiving a return of that investment of in excess of two hundred and forty thousand dollars over a ten-year period.
And how much will the school system be receiving in addition to what they want it within that same piece of.
Arden, let me grab that. So, what we, what we estimate is that based on property tax increases, based on improvements done at the facility, they would be receiving somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. The city would get about thirteen thousand dollars. And in terms of the new property tax, personal property tax, of course, you're not able to abate any educational taxes, the school system will be receiving almost twenty-five thousand dollars in new property taxes over the year.
Over, sorry, but.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. The floor of the council, open up the council, who's your guest wants to speak?
Absolutely. That's it, I'd like to introduce the president and CEO of BioHorizons, Mr. Steve Vogel.
Previously known as East West?
That's right, that's right.
How are you, sir?
Fine, how are you doing? Well, good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I am a resident of Greystone, and have honored to serve as CEO of BioHorizons over the last eighteen years. For those of you who don't know that much about us, we are an oral reconstructive device company. So, we have two primary product platforms. One is biomaterials for regeneration of bone and gum tissue in the mouth. The second are the design and manufacture of dental implants for the replacement of the CT. We sell our products to dental specialists, such as oral surgeons and periodontists, as well as to general dentists. And we, our largest market in the United States, about one, two-thirds of our sales. We also have six foreign subsidiaries and over fifty global distributors. On total, our products that we manufacture here in Hoover and California are sold in over seventy countries throughout the world. We employ, as Greg said, over five hundred and fifty people globally, and about a hundred and ninety now in Birmingham that are globally employers here in Hoover. And we are the fifth largest company in our space, and one of the fastest growing. Being located in Hoover for the last eleven years, we're very excited to remain here in the city. here in the city, uh, we are investing two million dollars, uh, in expansion that will create sixty jobs over the next four years. So the two million dollars is gonna be used for expansion of our facility, leasehold improvements, and the purchase of manufacturing equipment. Uh, we very much appreciate the consideration of the abatement of the sales and use tax, and we'll be happy to welcome any questions you have at this time.
Any questions from the council? Did either of our requested speakers want to speak to this issue? Not all soon, but probably a couple of candidates. Do you see anything from the council? Oh, that's a good, good omen. Mr. Corley?
Alter since extends the city's corporate limits to include property owned by the Hoover City Board of Education, as shown on the map attached to the ordinance. This is phase five of the multi-stage annexation.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number eighteen dash two four one five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, anyone from the council? Just real quick, uh, this is the fifth of six phases of annexation for the new R C three campus for the Hoover City Schools System, where they will be teaching, uh, trades, for the most part, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? And next item on the agenda will be the first reading and the final phase of the annexation. Any questions from the council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, Senator Clark, please call the role.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lydah?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is first reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four sixteen, concerning the same property, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance rearranges, alters, and extends the city's corporate limits to include property owned by the Hoover City Board of Education, as shown on the map attached to the ordinance. This is phase six of multi-stage annexation, the second reading of this ordinance in consideration for adoption is scheduled to be held on January seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Next, first reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four eleven, we have a motion, we need a motion to withdraw.
Mr. President, I move to withdraw ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four eleven.
Second.
A motion in a second, any comments or questions from the council? From the audience, seeing none, I want the papers to say aye?
Aye.
Well, no, yes, yes, I want the papers to say aye?
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it. Next, we have a public hearing, consider the request of Mr. Richard A. Johnson, the second, representing S P Dev Corp for conditionally use approval for a community amenity to include pool, clubhouse, pavilion, parking lot to be built in the moon trail subdivision of lot P one, according to the preliminary plat of Plymouth Farms Phase One as revised. The owner of the property is S P Dev Corp, and the property is currently zone P R one and extended to the bank. First, anybody here to speak for or against?
Three, square three.
Figuring a lot of houses. Anybody else here to speak for the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing, and now, uh...
President, I move to approve the conditional use.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any comments, questions from the council? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, is a public hearing, consider the request of Mr. Bob Matthews for conditionally use approval for the property located at thirty-two oh one, the road to be used for a buying and shop. Aye. Mr. Chandler, you wanna come on down? And talk to us about Carly's Clubhouse?
You know, we are working on our inclusive playground out of the, the Met, and we're very excited about us to be in our project, had a lot of partners in this, and, uh, it's called, we've called it Carly's Clubhouse, we did a whole important thing. Dustin Chandler's here tonight, he was, it was his idea to, uh, come up with something like this for, uh, people that, people with various disabilities, people with, uh, physical disabilities, people with autism, hearing and sight, this will address all of that, but the, the beauty of it, as each of you knows, is that it's all-inclusive, a child that may, may be in a wheelchair can play or swing, enjoy a playground right next to a sibling that has, uh, no particular disability, or a parent that may be in a wheelchair can now play with their child on, uh, in this playground, so we're very excited about us really something first to the Birmingham Hoover Metropolitan Area, maybe to the state, uh, and, uh, we just appreciate Dustin's input on this, and I think that, uh, he also, his organization wants to be a part of financially as well, so it would be a good opportunity if you'd like to say a few words.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, city council, appreciate you letting me slide in on a, a different time, I have my times mixed up, uh, for the record, if you can put that out. Um, as the mayor said, um, I just wanna share just a little bit about, uh, the vision I had, um, many years ago, and, uh, how the city Hoover has been, uh, more than, uh, open to all the ideas, uh, for Carly's Clubhouse, as many of you well know, uh, upon the council, my daughter was diagnosed with, uh, CDK five disorder, uh, she cannot walk, talk, uh, or feed herself, uh, she is, uh, got many different capabilities. Um, one thing I can say without a doubt is that when she was diagnosed in two thousand twelve, uh, she changed my life, um, she changed everything about me, uh, brought me closer to God, um, really changed, uh, me believing, uh, there is a heaven, um, I know there is a heaven, uh, because God doesn't create this other souls. Uh, I'll get to see Carly walk and talk, I'll see many of her friends walk and talk, it's not gonna be here, uh, but it will be in heaven when I get to see that, like I get to see my other two beautiful kids. But what, while we are here, what I am bound and determined to do as much as I can, and with a lot of help from the city of Hoover and everybody associated with it, and everybody in this room behind me, is to try to create a society that we are not forgetting about anyone, that we're not forgetting about those that may not be able to look like us, talk like us, walk, uh, learn the same way that we learn, and that we're having the most inclusive society that we can give kids and adults in our society. I'm a believer that we break down social barriers between our, um, disabled community, our special needs children, uh, we break down those social barriers later in life by getting to them at an early age and letting them learn about each other, uh, and the only way to really learn about each other is to, um, really be with each other, and I believe in inclusive play, um, playing with each other and understanding each other's differences is key into understanding each other as a person, uh, and as a human being. And what better way to do that than a playground? It's not in a school setting, it's not in a forced setting, it's somewhere where the children come to play, adults come to play, I would come to play, and to be able to let these kids, uh, that may not always have the opportunity to swing next to a child that is not like them, uh, and plays shoulder to shoulder with them, truly will teach them the, they really, the, the true meaning of what we're here for, and that's to be human beings and treat each other fairly, and, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm very fortunate that the city Hoover, Mayor Perretto and his staff, uh, listened to the ideas and, and put those in play, um, to really be, build this playground, and it's something I think that is gonna be a, uh, really something to behold, and, um, that other cities should look at and see a model of what a city did to really try to include everybody from the non-erotypical and the, some of the physically disabled, and it's for everybody, this is not gonna be something you look at and say, ooh, this is only for special needs children, it's gonna be something that you look at and hopefully say, ooh, it looks like Disney World and we get to go play. And I'll just end with this, it is, it is, it is a great honor to stand here, um, Carly's Clubhouse and the people that raised money for this, we can't always, we can never forget them, the people that donated money to my nonprofit, uh, we are for inclusive play and we wanna donate the city, uh, to the city, uh, check for ten thousand dollars, uh, to go towards the playground, and we just want it to be used, uh, as you guys already intend to use it, for inclusive play, and I wanna thank everybody, if anybody in this room donated to the nonprofit, and anybody that, uh, is watching this or hears this, that we appreciate everybody that put in the, uh, I mean, we stood out and took buckets and took change for donations, so, uh, I wanna thank them.
What about the fuck else that jumped out of airplanes?
Well, that too, I, I didn't bring that up, uh, Councilman Lydah, but, uh, yeah, we did jump out of airplanes, and I'll, anybody that wants to jump out of an airplane and you're with me, uh, y'all can do that as well, we'll probably have another one of those if you wanna do it, uh, so, yeah, we jumped out of airplanes to do this, we, uh, skydived for charity, uh, so all the people who did jump out and risk their life, literally or figuratively, I appreciate that, uh, as well, so thank you, uh, for letting me talk, and, uh, please, in any decisions that are ever made in the city level, state level, local level, at home, talk to your children about children with other differences and, uh, different capabilities, and, uh, thank you very much for the time, thank you.
Mr. Chandler, as we all know, God doesn't make mistakes.
That's right.
And Hoover is honored that, uh, a portion of, of our city's gonna be named in your daughter's honor, it'll be as long after we're all gone, whether it be for these positions or for the third itself, uh, how for your daughter in the family, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you.
Mr. Lydah, paying the bill?
Mr. Smith, I review those deals and I would move to be paid in full, just as considered.
Second.
A motion in a second, I want the papers to say aye?
Aye.
The opposed name, the ayes have it. This concludes the business portion of tonight's agenda, we've taken care of all the business to help the city stay on track for at least another two weeks. Now, we're gonna open up to the comments and questions, first, is there anything from the council?
Yes, Mr. Smith, uh, I'd like to take a minute to, uh, commend the library for having so many family-friendly events during this Christmas season, and would like to highlight two events coming up this week, on Wednesday, the nineteenth, at ten-thirty a.m. in the Library Theater, the staff will host its annual holiday song on children and parents.
Mr. Shaw, I may be there.
We'd love to see. Uh, also, on Wednesday, the nineteenth, at two p.m. in the Library Theater, the staff will host a Grinch double feature. This first movie will be the animated classic from the nineteen sixty-six film Grinch, followed by Jim Carrey as the Grinch and the live-action modern version of this holiday tale. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the exhibition is free and refreshments will be provided. Great, thank you, good job doing that.
Very good, anything else from the council? I would like to state this is our last meeting of this year, and, uh, something should arise where we need to call a meeting, but I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because, uh, the first meeting in January, we're gonna hit the ground running. Uh, first, we have Julie, Mr. Conrody? President Aaron Ho?
An issue to bring a nightmare to our city. I want to feel safe in our city again. Please require our officers to wear name tags before something happens, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ali Masood? Also a resident of Hoover.
How are you doing? Uh, like they said, um, I'm also a resident of Hoover, my name's Ali Masood. I, along with some other residents of Hoover, met earlier today with Mayor Perretto, uh, Mr. Rice, and also Councilman Middlebrooks. As for, of you, I have not had the pleasure of meeting you yet, and so I wanted to speak to you here today about the protests that have been happening in Hoover regarding the death of E.J. Bradford. One thing that came up at our meeting today was the talk about de-escalating the situation on all sides, and while I agree with that, there is, I think, a nuance that we need to take into consideration here. I've been to a couple of these protests, and I have to say that although I do not necessarily agree with everything that is being said there, I can respect it, and I can respect it because I know that it is coming from a place of hurt for the black community, I know that it is coming from a place of suffering, and I know that the black community has been through things that I, as someone who is not black, have not experienced, and so that sort of anger, I think, I can understand, or at least try to understand where it's coming from, and I can respect that. Now, on the other side of the equation, I've seen so much hatred coming from fellow residents of Hoover towards these protests, uh, I've seen people who are eager for these protests to happen and want to come across them, saying things like, well, I wish I would come across someone blocking the road because I would run them right over, and that sort of hatred is really disturbing, and, and that anger, I do not feel is justified, and I, and I think that there's a difference here when we talk about the anger of the protesters versus this sort of anger towards the protesters, because one is based on righteous indignation and the other is based on white supremacy, the other is based on people being inconvenienced and thinking that their inconvenience, their, their commute is more important than someone's life, and so I think that it's really important for us to keep track of that nuance, of, of the differences between anger of the protesters versus towards the protesters. Now, all that being said, I wanna make sure that we're not just having conversations about this, but actually coming up with measurable actions that we can take to solve this issue in our city, and I know that this is not something that we can solve with a meeting or with a workshop or anything like that, but I do feel like this is a prime opportunity for us to have these conversations and to try and do that. Now, I know that Councilman Middlebrooks, Councilman Murphy, uh, Councilman Shaw, that you've all met with residents about this issue, um, I'm not sure about the, the other four of you, um, I haven't gotten a chance to speak with you yet, but I would like to take this opportunity to ask the four of you, um, if you have met with any residents of Hoover about this issue specifically this week, and your thoughts on the matter, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd care to respond. I personally have not this week, I have for the last three weeks.
Yeah?
Yes, I have.
Yeah? Um, Mr. Smith and Mr. Green, uh, would you guys be willing to meet with residents of Hoover about this issue?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Those were the only people that signed up, are there any other people that, like you got here late?
Mr. Smith?
Doctor Middlebrooks?
If I may respond to the, uh, ten ladies who spoke first, just to clarify, and, and something that we discussed at our meeting earlier today, uh, police officers on regular detail are wearing their name badges, but if you come across a police officer during their regular course of, of shift duty, they should have a name tag, am I correct, Chief?
Not every day.
Not every day?
It hasn't happened, no.
But those that are on detail, particularly, uh, during the protest, for their safety, they, they have taken their name badges off, but will, uh, respond with the badge number if asked, and then that officer can be identified to the badge.
Anything else from the council? Not, Happy New Year, and we'll try to prepare for this.